Good evening. Tonight is the meeting of the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School Committee. It's Wednesday, August 21st. We're meeting at the Charlton Middle School at 6:32, it looks like. This school committee meeting is being recorded by the district. Is there anyone in attendance this evening who wishes to record and is using their own device? No? Okay. Then we'll move right on. With the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll just take a moment of silence, please. Okay. Thank you. Moving on into our consent agenda items. Is there anything anyone feels we need to pull out for discussion? No? Okay. Seeing that there's nothing, I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Someone?
Kathy?
Jamie Delovico.
Yep. Okay. All those in favor? And moving right into communications, does anybody have any communications to share? No? I just thought I'd mention I did notice today that Charlton's first PTO meeting is Wednesday, the 4th, at the middle school. If anybody is interested in attending, I'm sure they would love to see you. If no one has anything else, I guess we'll move right into superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and School Committee. I do have a couple of items to share. One is we are incredibly excited about the opening of our school year this year. I wanted to express my deepest appreciation for all of our staff. Their hard work, especially the year-round staff, because they work all summer long. And July was kind of a hot month, if you can think back to that very hot, steamy month. And hopefully, we're away from that heat as we get into school. As you know, our facilities are not all air-conditioned, so hopefully, we stay on the path we're on right now, which the weather has been, I think, ideal for back to school. But our year-round employees, their hard work, dedication, and commitment to our students in the communities of Dudley and Charlton have been nothing short of remarkable this year. As we embark on this new school year, I am confident that their passion in professionalism will continue to inspire our students and create a nurturing and stimulating environment for learning, helping every student strive to reach their full potential this school year. As you, as a committee, know, this was a very different summer than last summer, so we did have an opportunity to focus on some things and really work on things like hiring within our buildings. Our principals have worked hard to find the best candidates for their schools, and they've been working hard on that, so we do appreciate the support of the two communities to give us a summer to focus on opening up our school year this year. In my report, I did include some very important dates. This can be found on our website and our school calendar, but I just wanted to reiterate these because they are important and they impact a lot of us. Monday, August 26th is the opening for staff. It's our staff orientation, the entire district. We continue to try to build to have the entire district come to our meeting, so some buildings, if not most buildings, if not all buildings, will be closed from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning on Monday, the 26th, so that all staff can be oriented for the school year. We know that there'll be pockets, there may be appointments that are set up, because I know everyone is very busy to try to open up and have a very successful opening and have things in place. But that is our goal for August 26th, so there should be signs saying that schools will be closed from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning on Monday, the 26th, and then open for the remainder of the day. Then Tuesday, August 27th, is first day for all of our students, with the exceptions exception of pre-K and K, kindergarten and pre-kindergarten, which will start on September 3rd. And as a reminder, Friday of next week, August 30th, 2024, is an early release day for all students and staff for the preparation for the long weekend and also as an opportunity to reflect and prepare after knocking off the rust of summer break for all of our students and staff coming back to us. I think it's a great, I appreciate school committee support for that. I think it's a great opportunity for everyone to start the school year and then really gear up for the following week. As a reminder, Monday, September 2nd is Labor Day. There's no school. Tuesday, September 3rd is the first day for kindergarten and pre-kindergarten. Friday, September 27th is an early release day for all students, but staff are still in the building. In October, Friday before, Columbus Day, which has been traditionally an in-service day, is actually just an early release day this year. And I don't mean just, I only mean just in time, not in the purpose, but that's for all students, and we will be holding parent conferences on that day for all students within our district. We moved to have parent conferences for everyone on the same day, and that was one of them that was selected in the calendar review. It's not a full in-service day. Then Monday, October 14th, is Columbus Day. There's no school for all students and staff. And then we move into November. November, as you know, is typically a month that feels short, but very busy. Tuesday, November 5th, is a staff in-service day. That was the one in October that was moved to November 5th. Part of the purpose is that it's Election Day. It's a national election, so we want to give everyone the opportunity to vote. We want to have our staff be provided with support and professional development for the school year. Monday, November 11th, is Veterans Day. There's no school for all students and staff. And then our early release, sorry, I just noticed, you, the school committee should know this when you hear that. Pause me. I found a typo in what I just said, so it always throws me off. But Wednesday, November 27th, is an early release day, and that's the beginning of Thanksgiving break. So I just wanted to cover August through November, because it's a very aggressive time of year, but it's a very exciting time of year for all of us moving forward. The next item I have is, I shared with school committee the need for an additional teacher at Dudley Middle School. That emerged this summer due to increased registrations in 7th grade. I want to be clear, this has traditionally been a larger cohort of students for us, pushing the limits on class size, as you know, and we really support the school committee. You work hard on maintaining a class size, but there are given anomalies, because math is not a perfect science when it comes to class size. So that emerged this summer. We had lots of registrations at Dudley Middle School. I was working with Principal Desto, and because of the registrations, it really pushed it to a point where something needed to happen. It needed to be addressed. So we posted the position and successfully hired a qualified teacher. We put timing, as I shared with the school committee, but however, in line with our practice here in Dudley-Cheltenham, the additional position must be approved by the school committee. The position will be funded through our hiring practices, meaning any balances that we have within our hiring practices, and also by the school choice account, any available funds within that account. Therefore, I respectfully request that the school committee provide a favorable vote on this additional middle school teacher at Dudley Middle School this evening, and I would respectfully ask you to do it now. If you could. If you could. Sorry. I didn't mean to. That sounded very demanding. Yes, sorry.
All right. No, I got it. Yeah, I would entertain a motion.
Second was Jamie Delovico. No, sorry. Sorry.
Okay. Any discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Thank you. Mr. Desto, I'm sure thanks you as well. The next item I have is Shepparton Regional High School is preparing for its decennial accreditation visit in October 2027. So why am I talking about it now? I'm talking about it now because there is a lot of work that goes into this in preparation for 2027, which will begin with a two-day collaborative conference visit by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, known as NIASC, in October of 2025. Again, why am I talking about this now, 2025? I am, I'm sharing this with you because the work has been started and has started. This is an incredibly valuable process that begins this school year. The principal, Elwell, has already been working with his staff in preparation for the work that is required this year through NIASC in preparation for their visit in October 2025. The collaborative, NIASC collaborative conference visit is a new step in the process. This is not something that I've experienced in the past as well, but I am proud, I am proud of the work of Shepherd Hill staff, Shepparton Regional High School staff, and have complete confidence in Principal Elwell to oversee the high school's efforts to meet the standards of accreditation through this process. But I did want to give school committee a introduction to this, and I'm sure you'll see an update in a future agenda item for us. Okay? Once again, the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District has been selected to participate in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, NAEP. Last year, Dudley Middle School and Heritage Elementary School participated. This year, Dudley Elementary's 4th grade and Shepparton Regional High School's 12th grade have been preliminarily selected. Now, I'm saying preliminarily because something changed from last time to this time. Last year, we were just selected and told we're coming. This year, we actually had to complete a technology survey ahead of them coming, and I think it's partly because in the past, they would bring all of their own technology devices, and I think they're trying to get away from that, so they want to see what we have. And as you know, we're not a one-to-one district, so we may not, we have to still be chosen after the preliminary survey was done by Dan D'Angelo from our technology department. So we'll see, and I'll update you if Dudley Elementary School and Shepherd Hill are chosen this fall, and the testing window for NAEP is January 27th, 2025, through March 7th, 2025. But those are the two locations that were preliminarily selected, and it's incumbent upon me to share that with you as a committee. Okay? Next, the Charlton Recreation Commission held a ribbon-cutting ceremony on August 10th, 2024, at Charlton Middle School. Unfortunately, I was away on vacation. To showcase the completion of Adam Riddlick's Eagle Scout project, which involved creating a pickleball court and upgrading the tennis court for the Charlton community and Charlton Middle School. Special thanks go to Amazon, Sue and Peter Mally, Charlton Middle School Principal Stacy Monet, and others who supported Adam's Eagle Scout project. So if you get a chance, please go down and take a look at it. I have not had a chance to look at it yet, but I hear it's fantastic, and I know that they've been working with Charlton Middle School on opportunities and times to be able to use the court for the community. Because it is, as you know, these, our schools are supported by the community, not only from taxpayer money, but also from the people, and we want to make sure that we create opportunities for them to be able to access this great project from Adam Riddlick, Riddlick's project. And last, the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District administrative team has been working closely with Ms. Linda Johnson and Ms. Samantha Suss from Maffrey Insurance to coordinate a Maffrey Give Back project this fall. They've done other projects for us in our school district, but we worked together as a team to try to identify a meaningful project for them and a commitment from them, and as a result, the plan is for Maffrey volunteers to refresh the Mason Road Playground. We greatly appreciate the collaboration with Maffrey and their support of the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District, and also Principal Jen Desto's support of having them have the project at her location. So that's really good news for us as a community. And that concludes my report this evening.
Awesome. Thank you. That all sounds great. Can I ask you a question? Or can I, I don't even want to ask a question. I just wanted to make a statement, because I was at the ribbon-cutting for the pickleball, and it looks awesome, so definitely check it out. But there's a website that you can go on to reserve the times, and they'll also give you a code to unlock the equipment that's stored there.
Right.
So the nets aren't left out, but they're in a, they're in a case, and if you register for the time, you'll get a code to open the case, and then you can play. So I'm sure it will be enjoyed by lots of people, but it's really cool. I did actually have one other, one question. When I was there, it occurred to me about the lights. Do we have any idea, are those just on, like, sensor? Like, I'd hate to be paying for something that's not being used at night, that kind of thing? Like, are they on sensors or anything? Do we know?
Are the lights working?
Or that? I don't know. There were lights down there, and I was like, oh, it's cool that it's lit, then I was like, oh, will they be able to play at night?
They're not working.
They're not even on. Okay.
I think they worked in 20 years. I mean, I, there's an email that went back and forth, but they are looking at putting LED or maybe something.
Something to halve lighting?
But, right now, no, we're not making any lights.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Did you have a question?
I just had a question about parent conferences on the Friday of October, like, of Columbus Day weekend, and I didn't know, will, you know, typically, when we have parent conferences, they're in the afternoon and the evening. Are you planning on that as well?
I would say so, yeah.
Oh. Okay.
It was the calendar that was voted by school committee.
Yeah, that missed me.
Right. Yeah, same.
October 10th is the Thursday.
That's what I thought. It's a calendar. It's Thursday.
That makes more sense.
So the 11th.
Right. Because I was like, how did I not catch that, too? But, okay, so.
Those weekend plans are back.
Right. Like, there were not going to be a lot of people at this, in attendance that night. But, okay, that makes.
I was feeling pretty bad for the teachers. Okay.
Thank you.
So parent conferences are on.
Thank you for asking the question, and thank you for clarifying the date.
Okay. They're on the 3rd.
All right. So it's Thursday.
I'm not above mistakes. I'm clear about that.
Okay. Awesome. Any other questions or anything from superintendent? Okay. Great. Thank you, Steve. I guess we can move on to public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience for public comment? Come on up.
Good evening. Anthony Abbi, Charlton, Mass. Got a couple of questions. One is a status update for the bus app and when that will be operational. I know it was discussed today with the orientation at the middle school, and a lot of parents were kind of interested, because right now, it just says no student available, anybody who logs in. My second question is student schedules, when those completions might come about? A lot of them still say no room numbers or no block numbers, and so I'm sure it's a work in progress, but, I mean, we're only seven days out, and I'm just kind of curious when that'll be at fruition. And my last one is, what is the process for the DUCRSD community in terms of participating within the NIASC review? I've been in it personally a decade ago in higher education with NIASC, so I'm very, very familiar with the process. I was a member of that reaccreditation. So I'm just curious on our procedure, on how we select individuals and which individuals will be participating in that reaccreditation for NIASC. Thanks.
Thank you. I think they were all answerable questions.
That's why you have the answers, because I have none. All right. Did we want to?
New business.
Yeah. Move on to, okay. We're going to move on to our new business and call up our Vanpool representatives.
Madam Chair and School Committee, I'd like to introduce from Vanpool Franco Indemnico and Catherine Estelle. They were requested to attend this meeting, partly because we have an ongoing relationship with Vanpool. They have been a service provider for us on specialized transportation for a number of years, and then also partly, probably in larger part, is last year was a very difficult year, especially for those consumers in our district. We struggled with on-time service. We struggled with, you know, meeting the basic tenants of their contract and obligation to us. So in preparation for this school year, we really wanted to ask them to come in and as their representatives and their leadership, and really work with you as a committee. I guarantee there's members of this committee who've heard from parents, our parents, regarding the experience last year, and I think we're all in a position where we really want to set the stage for, and I think Vanpool's with us on this, they want to set the stage for an incredibly successful year this year, but, you know, they're willing to come here and answer the hard questions that should go their way. So again, I introduced Franco and Catherine, and look forward to the school committee questions that you may have for them.
All right. Thank you. And good evening, Madam Chairperson and distinguished members of the school committee. Thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to be here tonight to discuss transportation services that we provide for the district and our plans to improve those services for the upcoming school year. As mentioned, my name is Franco Indemnico. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Western and Central Massachusetts, and I represent Vanpool Transportation, and we are the special transportation provider for the school district for approximately the last 14 years. With me is Catherine Estelle. Catherine is our Director of Client Relations. She is essentially the liaison between the district, our pupil services team, and also our staff. Catherine has been instrumental in helping to develop our improvement plan for next year, and I'll let her speak on some of the initiatives that we have going into next year.
Thank you, Franco. Thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. So we acknowledge that last year, we did have a number of challenges. At the end of the school year, we had made some changes to mitigate as many service issues as we had. Those were carried through the summer. We did have a call this afternoon, we do have a standing call every week with, with your team, and they were able to verify that we did have a very successful summer. We have made some additional changes. I'll go into those in a minute, so that we can provide good service for this upcoming year. One of them is that we have improved our recruiting efforts. It has paid off. We have all of your routes assigned, a driver and a monitor. In addition to that, we have a spare driver, and we are working on building out our bench further. We continue to collaborate closely with the Pupil Services Department by holding the weekly call. That's been very successful for us. We work well together. We supply any type of information that they have outside of actually service issues. So if there's some questions regarding some of the students' times being picked up or any of the other questions that they might have, we're able to supply that information based on the data that we have with our, with our tablets that we use. We are, have assigned one of our most experienced staff members to oversee all of the district requests and routing options. Kathy has been in this area for, I think, 20, 20 years? She's been working for the company, and she's very knowledgeable, and she has been part of those weekly calls as well. So it's been very collaborative. And we're also looking to establish a satellite office in the area with one of our sister companies, and in the meantime, we are working to stage one of our spare vehicles and a standby driver, both in Dudley and in Charlton, so those would be easily accessible. And as a company-wide initiative, we will be strategically placing our drivers/coaches and trainers in the area to assist drivers with IT issues, routing questions, student behavior, and any other daily transportation matters. So in conclusion, we are committed to providing a high level and reliable transportation service to the district, and are confident that these steps will take, that we've taken, will help us return the service levels that you're accustomed to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm glad your recruiting efforts have worked for you. Do you anticipate, are you still trying to get extra drivers as well?
We are. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we're actually working on building out the bench.
Okay.
So we're working on that as well.
It's an initiative that doesn't end.
Sure.
I don't think it's a secret. I think nationwide, there's been an issue with driver shortages, you know, just throughout, not just in New England, but nationwide. I think this summer, actually, we've taken the initiative to to raise driver rates and driver pay in our area, and it's actually paid off for us now. So we've seen a movement towards actually getting ahead of where we were last year. As Catherine mentioned, all of your routes right now that we have based on the student list that we received, all of those routes right now are covered, and we have spares. And we actually, we do have one spare, but we also have at least four or five people that are in training right now, too, that'll serve as backup. One other thing, too, that we didn't mention, too, is we have another office out in the Wilbraham area that's available to support the needs of the Dudley-Cheltenham area as well, so I've included them. It's not just going to be out of one office, it'll be out of several offices, too, that'll help backfill any shortages that we might have in the area.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anybody have some questions?
I love how everyone's looking at me.
We all know you.
So Franco, hi. I'm Jean Costello.
Yes.
We've had many conversations.
Absolutely.
I'm still waiting on a phone call from you from the last time I requested during ESY that I wanted to speak with you.
Okay. We can certainly talk.
So I'm going to just go over a couple of things, if you don't mind. So you're saying the driver rates have increased. What are the current driver rates for the drivers now?
$23 an hour.
So $23 an hour. So you're more on par with the other NRT vanpools, like, out of Hudson and the other bases, so closer to the 23. So, and then on average, how many hours a day do the drivers work?
On average, it'll be, it's between 25 and 30 hours. It depends on the routes that they have.
So 25 to 30 hours a week?
Right.
Okay. And then, one of the things I was wondering about was the actual training that the drivers get around here for the base that you're operating out of, because out of my own, and out of my many phone calls and emails, let's see, I've had late pickups. I've had extreme late drop-offs, not due to traffic, but do, you know, because at that time, my child was going out of district, so it wasn't 290 traffic, it was just other reasons that were never really explained or easily communicated quickly. And I have all the faith in Kathy. I have known Kathy for probably 14 years, since I also was an avid user of Vanpool for my children when I lived in the Quabbin Regional School District. So I have questions on the training that the Vanpool drivers get, since so many of the Vanpool drivers actually work with special education students, and that as being a contracted service of the district, you're also required to follow through with all the policies and also the IEPs of those students. So, and I know this isn't fully the case, because I actually have an incident report of which a van driver instigated the issue by demanding a teenage boy sit up straight in his chair. So it's great that you're doing other initiatives, get more people in, but what about being successful in the job?
Okay. So we do provide full training. We have safety supervisors that provide full training, not only just for new employees, but we have ongoing training on a monthly basis. We have monthly calls with all of our staff. They're all required to put in eight hours of service every year, but we provide actually more than that. So training for special needs is ongoing, and if the district needs a copy of our training manual, we would certainly be able to provide that for you. Now, I can't speak on the individual issues that you're talking about in particular. I mean, those things that we can certainly discuss, but I'm not privy to any of that. But if the district needs a copy of our training manual, we'll certainly provide it for you. As a matter of fact, Vanpool, coming out of, coming out of COVID, was tapped by the Department of Motor Vehicles to provide training for all the 7D drivers throughout the state at the time, because some of the companies weren't able to provide that training, so they tapped us to utilize our training for that.
No, and I would have to say the 7D training from Vanpool is actually really good. You have a very high success rate of people actually passing the 7D certification, which is great, but I'm talking more on actually working with the student that's, and understanding how to work with positive behavioral supports to actually ensure that you're engaging a student in a proper and safe ride and.
Sure. If there is a student that needs, has a particular need, we work with the Pupil Services Department. We're not necessarily privy to the IEPs themselves, but if there is anything in the IEP that pertains to transportation that would make their ride successful, we'd hope that the department would collaborate with us to let us know what those needs are, and we would certainly work with them. You know, if it's, you know, if it's something where the student might need a laptop to keep them, you know, occupied, or certain music that they need in the vehicle, we would certainly work with the district or the Pupil Services Department to do that.
Or how to talk with somebody, like, if they have stereotopy and they may not be saying, quote-unquote, appropriate verbiage.
Well, there's, there's the standard, you know, training that we have for working with students with special needs, but then, like I said, if there's any individual particular needs that a student needs, then we would work with our, that particular driver to address those needs.
Sorry, I'm using more my experience than the plethora of other people that have talked with me about it, because I would prefer them to talk to you directly. So I've also noticed going to the wrong address, which, yes, can double-check where it may have been put in wrong, or maybe the Excel sheet didn't drop the right way. But what I also look at, there's been very little of one-to-one handoff of a student of not following the directions that are actually listed in the tablet in the vehicle and not activating the lights for having a student board the van or depart the van.
If there's issues, you know, with any individual, you know, employee, we would address those separately, and we do have disciplinary measures for, you know, people that don't follow protocol. So those are addressed.
All right. But the thing is, is I'm also looking on the fact that being part of the Special Education Parents Advisory Council and having you at that meeting at that time, and hearing very similar things, except, thank you for the pay increase, that was, you know, not as, not as high as what it is now, and I appreciate that, but I've heard those same things at that meeting that you are actually saying today. So, and last year was not the best year, to the point that you actually do have those So, and last year was not the best year, to the point that you actually do have those weekly calls. In the past 14 years, this has been the first year, as far as my understanding, that you've had to do weekly calls to ensure commitment to service. So I would say that at the very least, we meet again, and I would say like October, to see how the school year is forming.
So I've been on every weekly call since we started those. It was a joint decision, a lot of collaboration, and not all of it were service issues. Not to any of my recollection, did anyone at that time ever mention that we had a van arrive at a property and not turn on their lights? So we just need to make sure that the flow of communication from the parents is going to the proper channel, and then that, that communication is coming to us. I, that's the first I've heard of it. I was at that meeting, and I don't think there was any specifics given. I mean, we can look into it, and as Franco said, you know, we do, we do have disciplinary, they do know the rules of, you know, turning on the lights and that type of thing. So we just need to make sure that the flow of communication gets to us so that we can rectify those situations.
I'm just offering a suggestion, like, I, I agree, like, I think it's hard to understand, like, the flow of information needs to be both ways. And I just, for a parent, have we established how they would, how they would let, who do they let someone, who do they let know? Do they call Vanpool? Do they, do they call the central office? Like, do they fill in a, do we have like a log sheet so that we can keep track of these incidences? That, so during your weekly call, we can kind of summarize these? I'm just wondering, because I, I think, you know, as we move forward and we think of contracts, like, we want to make sure that, okay, we can log our incidences, know what the resolutions were, and we can actually go with the data that we have and make sure we have good data on that.
So a lot of the communication flow, it, it's both ways. So there's parents historically that, that will call the office, and that's, and that's fine, as a matter of, it's a service that we provide for the district, and, you know, it eliminates all the calls coming into, into the Pupil Services Office, and some will choose to call the, the office directly. But a lot of that is vetted out when they, the, our office staff and the Pupil Services staff have their calls. So we're, and Kay can speak more on it, but, you know, again, it's, it's a weekly collaboration. So we are communicating back and forth between the Pupil Services and our staff, so.
So do you log every call that comes in? Or can you?
Well, we'll log, if there is a specific issue, you know, for a, an incident where she's talking specifically about a disciplinary issue, we would log that in the person's personnel file. We don't necessarily log every call that comes in, because we, we get hundreds of calls every day, just parents calling out their students. But if there are incidents, yes, we, we will log those, yeah. There is a record of those.
Okay. And is that shared with the district, like, in real time, so that they understand? Like, I, I just don't want, like, our district to get a phone call and not have the ability to, to understand that it even happened.
Kay, do you, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I, we, we have created as a company something that's called Beacon Connect. It's a communication device that is from the district to Beacon Mobility, so in vanpools. And so right now, we are in the process of rolling that out. Not all school districts are on it. We will bring on the second group onto it. And in there, all of the principals, the superintendent, any of the admin assistants, anybody that's applicable to communicating with us, it'll be direct communication, myself and Franco have access to it, senior leaders in our organization. And what it does is it, it basically keeps track of all the communications that's coming through. So in that particular case, yes, we could go back and look, and eventually, it will come out where there would be communication that would come to, from, to and from the parents, but that's down the road. Right now, we're just working with the districts on that. So it is something, normally in our weekly conversations, it is just notes that are taken. We just keep documentation, kind of a running list of topics that we've been discussing, who's following up on what. But I think the, the communication, if in this particular case, the parent can reach out to Vanpool, the parent could reach out to probably the Pupil Services Department, let us know that there was an issue with somebody using inappropriate language, or asking a student to do something that was inappropriate, or not using their lights. And so then that way, we can receive that information from them, act on it, and then be able to get back to that parent in that, and then we'd have a trackable reconciliation about it.
And are we on the list to get that beacon? The Beacon Connect?
I can, I can put you on the list.
If that, that's up to.
Madam Chair and School Committee, Heather Harriman, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, has worked on a communication process with Vanpool. She has set up a Google Sheet for building principles to fill in, and this summer, we talked about getting all seven for seven, being all on the same page and using that as for communication. Sometimes a detail will get lost in that because you're talking about a third-party communicating, and then we're communicating with Vanpool. That is very important, that communication. And we, we've designated Chelsea Jet in our, in our office as the person who's going to be the communication. So Vanpool doesn't talk to a couple of people, they just talk to one person who facilitates all of that, and that's been working so far, they've worked this summer for us as well. You know, to me, as a superintendent, one of the biggest things that I have is, I, I am very concerned about anything that, as Jean has raised, is detailed concerns and all that. For us, for the entire year, it was really around timing, picking up, communicating changes, all that. Okay. And, and, you know, we're, we're in this reactive mode, we've been in it, and we're trying to get, we're, we're definitely organized around it. That communication piece still has to be in place because we're not satisfied until we have the success that we have for 14 years, 15 years with Vanpool. We're hoping that last year was an anomaly in every way, shape, and form, but we're still talking about kids. We're still talking about kids coming to school on time and leaving on time and all that kind of stuff. So we're going to pay very close attention to it, and if we, if we can get involved with some communication tool that you're rolling out, we want to be, we want to be involved. But Heather Harriman has definitely done her due diligence as a leader, tried to put all this together. She's the one who started having the weekly meetings for us to do all this stuff. She shares the communication of the shared sheet, Google Sheet, with Kathy, who is the, I forget her title, coordinator, our coordinator we, we speak to out of Vanpool. She shared it with her, so she knows what's coming. It's not new information, surprising information. Unfortunately, Vanpool just couldn't meet what they were expected to do. And, you know, it's not that, it's not that I'm diminishing or minimizing what Jean is bringing up, those are very serious concerns, but the overall exercise with the contract last year in, in meeting the service requirements was very difficult. And that's the stuff that we're not going to let go, we're going to pay very close attention to it. But we're also not going to stop a parent who wants to reach directly out to Vanpool, because that is, that's, to me, always transportation, that's the closest thing to the front door of a house, and you want to go right to the source. So I, you know, I, we're not expecting a parent to have to reach out to me, to reach out to a principal, reach out to a third-party. They're waiting, if they're waiting for Vanpool to show up, they should contact Vanpool right away, because Vanpool has all of the technology to radio their cars, they monitor everything, they have the, they keep logs of when kids are dropped off, picked up, all that kind of stuff. They have all the details that we would ever need. If a student is five minutes late, they, they put it in a log, they know, they, they identify that time. So we're just, we have more details to work through, but we're hoping that we're, we're setting the stage for a very organized, very productive.